Good evening, we'll call the special city council meeting to order. Teresa, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Excused.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Here.
Thank you, all right. This evening, we will start out with a public hearing for Resolution Number 5422, City Council to hold a public hearing in consideration of authorizing the amended and restated development agreement with Capital Acquisitions LLC related to the Auburn Gateway Project. Jeff, is there a staff report?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'd step up to the podium. Good evening, for the record, Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development for the City of Auburn. Tonight before City Council is Resolution 5442. I want to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about what the resolution is, what it isn't, talk a little bit about where the development agreement that's part of the resolution fits within a process for evaluating a land use proposal like this. So first of all, what we're really talking about is the former drive-in, Valley Six Drive-In property. On the screen, I've, there's a map that shows in yellow the actual property area that we're talking about. And we'll talk in a few minutes, a little bit in detail about some of the lines and colors that you see on that map. But that's what we're talking about, is the Valley Six Drive-In property. It's been referenced historically as the RPG property because the ownership group is called Robertson Properties Group. And RPG has expressed interest in selling the property. It's on the market at this point. And back in April, you heard a presentation from Inland Construction. Inland has expressed an interest in acquiring the property. And for the last six months or so, Inland and the city staff have been talking about what those future plans would look like, and what their hopes are for the property, as well as what our hopes are, and hopes for both of us probably turn into needs. So this is a little bit different of a development concept than what council adopted in the development agreement back in 2011. And I'll just say a minute about a development agreement. That term gets used a lot. And a development agreement is something that's allowed under state law. And it really allows a municipality and a property owner to enter into a negotiation for developing a piece of property. So cities commonly use development agreements. And what it is, in maybe its most basic premise, what it does is, it allows a developer to do something more, or more intense, or more well-defined than what a zoning code would allow. And it allows the city to ask for more to be done than what we typically would have the authority to ask under city code. So that's why it's an agreement. It's a negotiation, it's two parties sitting at a table over a period of time, talking about win-win outcomes. So, city council, a prior city council in 2011 previously entered into the development agreement under a prior resolution with RPG. So Resolution 5442 proposes modification to the original development agreement, and it also proposes to add some supplemental items which are included in your packet. I'd like to take a minute just to orient you to what's in the packet. Obviously, you have an agenda bill. And I do this because a development agreement isn't something that often comes before city council. So while they're, you're used to seeing resolutions and ordinances, development agreements don't come along that often. So that's why I want to just take a minute to orient everybody to what's in their packet. Page two is the agenda bill, a brief cover sheet, as well as page three. Page five is the actual resolution, Resolution 5442. And one of the things that can be confusing is, attached to the resolution, resolution is in exhibit, Exhibit A. So Exhibit A is the development agreement. But then Exhibit A has attachments to it. So I don't want that to become confusing, because I get confused by that very easily. So Resolution 5442 has Exhibit A, and then there are a number of attachments that are part of Exhibit A. And all of that together makes up the development agreement. What we've put in the packet are those parts that are proposed to be changed. So there are parts from the development agreement in 2011 that aren't proposed to be changed. They're the same as what city council adopted eight years ago. So what we've included in here is the resolution itself for council to consider. A new Attachment One, which is an updated legal description. And that's in there because since 2011, there's been a property acquisition that has occurred, and that needed to be reflected in the development agreement. Attachment Two is a conceptual site plan. And that's an area that I can see spending a lot of time looking at, just trying to get a sense of what Inland's concept is. So when you're looking at Attachment Two, it is the more colorful image on page 31. It shows a layout of residential area. It shows some commercial area, mixed-use office-type areas, as well as a central public amenity that is referred to as the heart. And then on page 32, this is Attachment Six to Exhibit A of Resolution 5442. So Attachment Six is important because this is really all new. So if I'm in your shoes, this is an area that I would be keying in on, to understand what is, what's happening here, what are some of the new pieces? You know, over the years, there's been a lot of conversation about RPG, about this development agreement, about what would happen at the Valley Six Drive-In site. But Attachment Six is, along with some of the proposed modifications that you'll see throughout your packet materials, that's where there's a lot of language about, really, features, amenities, investments that are being made in a certain sequence of time on this property by Inland Construction if city council approves the resolution. I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes highlighting some of the key changes. Obviously, available to answer questions on any word that's in any of these documents, but I think some of the important areas to hone in on are, the development agreement itself, what it, what it does is, it would change the agreement over to Inland instead of RPG. So the development agreements are really between parties. It doesn't transfer with land, as land is bought and sold. So the agreement is directly with a property owner. The development agreement would allow Inland to pursue a horizontal mixed use. The current development agreement mandates that it's vertical construction mixed use. So while vertical construction downtown Auburn, the new construction you see, we have ground floor on the commercial, and you have upper stories that are residential, makes a lot of sense in a, you know, a transit-oriented downtown development where there's a lot of walking opportunity to transit services, to restaurants, to work. It doesn't quite function the same way in a, you know, part of town where you're on the edge, the northern edge of the town. So what this, if council were to approve Resolution 5442, it would allow for a horizontal layout of mixed use. It also provides a number of clarifications. Things have happened since 2011, so the development agreement, there's a number of clarifying items to just modernize it. And when you look at Attachment Six, some of the areas that I would key into are establishing oversight before a project comes into the city for architectural review, for pedestrian connectivity, for evaluating open space, how open space functions with commercial and residential spaces. So it adds a layer in there to make sure that a well-thought-out proposal makes its way to the city before it comes through in the, in through the permit center. Lays out a residential concept, which is really the south half of the property. So if you're looking at that map, and we talk about the north half, and we talk about the south half, 49th Street Northeast is the dividing line, runs east-west on the drawing in a red line that you'll see. And so south of that red line would be a, the residential piece, 500 dwelling units. North of that line would be the heart and the commercial components. Also, within the residential area, we've spelled out a lot of different types of amenities for the residents who would live in that community, whether those be trails, or sport courts, community gardens, things of that nature. So adding in richer level of amenity than we typically are authorized to require or ask for under city code. One thing that I would key in on the trails piece is, the trails are intended to connect outside of the site. So we've made it clear in here that those trails should never be blocked. So if there's trans, if there's a need to move through the site from the east to the west, or the north to the south, and you get over to the Green River, and there's a trail system there, and you go towards Inner Urban Avenue, there's a trail system over there, that through this site, those trails would be open for anybody to use through, to navigate and get from one place to another. We've also placed an emphasis on incorporating crime prevention through environmental design components into the project, as well as to strengthen some of the language related to how we interact with multifamily property owners and managers to create for healthy and safe communities. On the commercial side, on the north end of the property, there's language incorporated in here about what we want to see out of a marketing plan. How is the developer going to go out and try to capture retail tenants? How are they going to, how are they going to form some relationships with commercial developers, potentially, to try to see the commercial piece come together? And that's always been a lingering question about, how do you make commercial happen? We all want to see it. It's been long envisioned for this property, but making commercial happen has to follow something of market conditions. And there's a heavy emphasis in the development agreement to really seek more investment in terms of infrastructure and utilities on the site, so that it makes it easier to develop the commercial component later on. Inland would, under this agreement, would spend a substantial sum of money to make those, to make that north half ready for the commercial piece, by building out streets and trails and utilities, and just making it ready for it to be easy for a future commercial development. And other pieces that we've asked be included, and that Inland has agreed to, are just working with us on making sure utility boxes are wrapped with art, and using our local artists to be able to make that come together, to be able to put more intentionality into how the whole site is connected internally, using landscaping and design, and not just creating a trail or a sidewalk, but making sure that it has a real strong sense of design, and it creates a good place that people want to be. The heart, that's, that's been a big topic of conversation, and something that I can say city staff is very excited about. And that's five acres in the middle of this property, that you can see on page 31, if you're looking at that map. Five acres of community gathering space. So picture a music stage, a number of food trucks, a place for people to be able to gather that's landscaped, that can accommodate food events, and outdoor theater, and outdoor music, and a place where not just the residents of the future commercial, or multifamily residential component would be able to go, but it's a place for the whole community to be able to assemble and utilize. Includes public restrooms as well. And then there's some transportation pieces that I'll key in on. If there are questions about the transportation and utility side, I'll probably look directly over to Ingrid, so just heads up on that. But it would be building I Street through, so from 277th. And you can see, I hope you can see my cursor, it's kind of faint, but on the north end, you'll see that the road labeled as I Street Northeast, and where it connects with 277th, and how it sort of meanders down to the south and connects up throughout the whole site. So it is building I Street all the way through. It is 49th Street Northeast, including a shared-use path as well. It's D Streets Northeast, so on the, on the west side, or the left side of that drawing, the other north-south road, D Street Northeast, and, you know, completing out that road infrastructure as well. And at the south end, putting in a cul-de-sac, so it doesn't connect with Auburn Way North, because we really want to key in on I Street as being a primary corridor through there. It is installing traffic signals at Auburn Way North and 49th Street, and 277th and I Street. It's a roundabout intersection at 49th and I Street, so in the middle of the site. Frontage improvements along Auburn Way North, a U-turn on Auburn Way North of 45th Street Northeast. Trailhead parking and commute trip reduction strategies incorporated into both the commercial and residential side. The utilities include extending water and sewer throughout the site, and storm drainage. The development agreement also provides a lot more detail about sequencing. When do those public improvements occur relative to when private development is occurring? Making sure that one is keeping up with the other, so that you don't do all one, and then the other doesn't get built out. So those are the basic key pieces, the highlights, I think. Right now, I think, from a process point of view, what's before council, a resolution on the development agreement. There are other pieces that will come before council in time. The Planning Commission is currently evaluating zoning code amendments that would support this concept. They're scheduled to have a public hearing on July 16th. Those code amendments would come forward to city council as well, with the Planning Commission's recommendation that would support this development agreement. Additionally, we're conducting more environmental analysis. The concept's changing from the environmental analysis we did before, so we need a relook at some wetlands and transportation impacts, and things of that nature. And then obviously, the development permit applications, the civvles and the buildings and the land use applications that would be coming in, following this legislative action if approved. If this isn't approved, Inland is not likely to put their continued investment in those designs. So, timing is critical. There are three different timelines that we are all facing, and I say this because it's not just Inland, but the city's facing these timelines as well. The one timeline between Inland and RPG is just a property transaction. And the timelines that go along and the dates of performance before you have to start putting large dollars down on a piece of property to make it, that transaction go forward. The second item is, Washington State Housing Finance Commission has awarded the project with housing credit, housing finance credit, and it is for this calendar year, 2019. And if the project doesn't hit a certain milestone before this year is over, they have to go back through that process and apply, and there's no guarantee that they would get those credits. An important piece in the financing, and making it more affordable for a developer to carry it out. And then the last item is FEMA floodplain map changes. We know that in early part of 2020, the maps are going to change. FEMA will be changing the mapped boundaries for our floodplains, and this property is affected by that. And it'll add about 10 more acres, or 15 more acres of floodplain into this site. And so it's important, because we've long envisioned being able to do something with this property that is a positive amenity for the community, it's important for them to make certain, to make progress before those map changes occur. So that, that is it in a nutshell. There's a lot there, there's a lot more that could be talked about. But I think right now, you know, I think, I think I mentioned in the agenda bill, staff supports city council to take action to approve Resolution 5442. We're happy to answer questions about that. I know that we'll open it up to public comment, and I'm sure that there'll be at least a person or two that might want to say a few words, and can probably answer some questions.
Questions from council. Councilmember Wales, and then Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. If you look at your colorful schematic, you have the red arrow on 49th Street going through the open space. So, and the red line is vehicle circulation. Does it cut through the open space? The second question is, who is going to be responsible financially for the maintenance of the open spaces and the wonderful heart of the development? And who's going to be responsible for taking care of the restrooms? Third question is, you have a stoplight going in on 277th and I Street, and was consideration given to, instead of putting it there, putting it on Auburn Way North and 49th? Or is there already a light there?
At Auburn Way North and 49th, that's where there's a light also proposed.
Okay.
So that is part, there'd be two lights.
Okay, okay.
The, going back to the first question, yes, 49th, it's hard to see on an aerial image, but, in fact, I'm going to stand here and point at it.
Yeah.
The cursor's hard to see. This road right here already, that right-of-way already exists through here, so it has been anticipated there'd be a road connection through.
Oh, okay.
And then, the heart is private property. We have included in the development agreement that there has to be coordination between the city, and how it's programmed. So we want to make sure that our Parks Department has the opportunity to engage and be involved in that, and work on a successful marketing plan for what those types of events are. But it's private property, maintained is private property, the public restrooms are private property. We will not be the ones responsible for maintaining that.
What, what about the rest of the open spaces? They're, they're pretty large size, and trails, are we going to be responsible for those?
We're not, we're only going to be responsible for what's in the right-of-way. So, most of that open space will not be right-of-way.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, this 70-acre site, approximately, when it's completely built out, how many front doors are we looking at?
That's a...
I know it's, a wag is quite okay at this point.
So, that is, I'm going to eyeball this, and I'm going to say that there'll be probably... I think that based upon how it's tenanted, I mean, you could have a tenant come in and say, "I want a whole building," but you're probably looking at about 50 doors.
You're talking about the commercial side?
Yeah.
Okay, how about in residential?
500.
500. It's a good ratio.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, where are they going to put the stormwater storage?
So I might ask for some help from Ingrid on this, but recall that with storage, with stormwater regulations, the regulations that are currently in effect are what will govern the site. So, you know, we'll be looking at modern storm standards at infiltration first. And I don't know if infiltration will work on this side, or if it needs to go more to regional kind of treatment, and I will turn it to Ingrid.
Yeah, so I believe what their plan is to use some of the open space area for where they need to do quantity control.
Because, you know, being so close to the river, it's very important that we stay on top of this, and make sure that the, if it is open space, that, that we get it designated soon.
Yeah, so, so they're showing open space on here, it's basically open area, but I think part of their plan is that they will incorporate their storm drainage treatment locations within those areas, and their quantity, their detention areas within those areas.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say again, we want to make sure that it's in the agreement that there is storm water.
So, so, yeah, the agreement, they're required to meet all of our normal standards and requirements, as they are today in our stormwater manual, so that's already covered.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So we will open the public hearing to comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and try to limit comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please, come, come on up.
I don't know that I was thinking three minutes.
How long were you thinking?
I don't know. Hi, my name's Scott Morris, I'm with the Inland Group. We are the developer and applicant here on this project, and it's good to see you again. I was here, what, in April? I think I started out in April by complimenting the staff, and saying how great it was to work with Jeff, and Jeff, and Ingrid, and Jacob, and Steve, and after two months of pretty heavy negotiations, I don't know, I'd start off quite as glowingly from my perspective. However, from your perspective, they're doing their job very well. We've been negotiating. And, you know, Jeff did a good job, but in looking at what the city is getting out of this, and it's important, obviously, to you as the city council members, and for the citizens, you know, you're getting the Coppergate Apartments, which is 500 multifamily units of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And we've been now documented that it will have two clubhouses, a pool, a splash pad, community gardens of at least 800 square feet, a community trail system, two playgrounds, a sport court of at least 4,000 square feet, and three outdoor amenities in addition to the pool and outdoor space and sport courts.
Never knew you'd love development agreements so much, did you?
We have the privately-owned and programmed community open space, which is, we've been calling the heart, with a stage for performances, 40 bike racks. I should also mention that Coppergate has a requirement of three secured bike lockers holding 250 bikes. The heart will also have an outdoor movie theater, space for five food trucks with power and utilities hooked up to it. It'll have a perimeter landscaping, that's ADA compliant. It'll have a lighting plan, it'll have public restrooms, it will have a third-party programmer, and it will be funded and marketed on an annual basis by us. At least until there's a commercial user who might be able to take it over, because it really is meant to be the center of not just the residential, but the, the commercial space too. From the city, you're getting right-of-way dedication for all your roadways and utilities in the area. We're doing a "Welcome to Auburn" sign, that'll be no less than 500 and no more than 1,000 square feet. We've committed to dedicating right-of-way for bus lanes, five permanent trailhead spots along 277th, and a commitment and contribution to the city's utility box wrap program. On the commercial side, we're bringing utilities, both wet and dry, across the street, all the way to the site, with... all the way to the site with the hope to make it as easy and less, least expensive commercial space in the town of Auburn. We're gonna have a landscape tradition that's somewhat been designed for us by the city between the commercial and the residential. We'll have a pedestrian crossing with a flashing beacon across Forty-Ninth Street. If that's not enough, on Auburn Way, you will have all the frontage improvements on both the north and south with a U-turn on the southbound Auburn Way. On D Street, you'll have a local residential street between Forty-Ninth and Auburn with utilities and with a cul-de-sac terminating it before Auburn Way. From Forty-Ninth to Two Seventy-Seventh, it will also be completed, but at the time of the commercial development. On Forty-Ninth, from D Street to I Street, they'll have two fourteen-foot wide lanes in each direction, or one in each direction with an eleven-foot wide turning lane in the middle and a ten-foot wide sidewalk with all utilities, water, sewer, and storm in. From D Street to Auburn Way, you'll have complete improvements in the existing right-of-way, plus we will design the full street for when the right-of-way is acquired, and we will pay one hundred percent of the difference from what we do to the cost to go develop that for when the right-of-way is acquired. And on I Street, you will have, again, two fourteen-foot wide lanes with an eleven-foot wide turn lane, a ten-foot wide sidewalk with all utilities with storm, water, and sewer. And if not enough, you'll get a roundabout at I and Forty-Ninth. You'll get a signal at Forty-Ninth and Auburn Way, and a signal at I and Two Seventy-Seventh. The negotiation. I, I wish to assure you, I'm actually a good negotiator.
You really are, yes.
In this case, we didn't say no to the city. We really did not on almost anything. We worked really hard to make sure that this was feasible, that we could finance it, and that we could underwrite it. And there's a lot of unknowns in there, and it was really difficult to try and figure that in. And I think we've got there. We won't know that till we get to our underwriting and financing side, but I think we've got enough things built in that as long as we're showing the effort on our end, the staff's gonna work with us to make, get done. After we finished this negotiation, I sent an email to Jeff and Jeff and Ingrid and Jacob and Steve and let them know that I'm glad that we're done and that while we didn't consider it a win for us, the truth is, and this is what I believe, is if we can pull this off together, and there's a lot of work still to be done, and it's gonna take everyone's effort, it's not just gonna be a win for us, it's gonna be a win for the city. It's gonna be a win for the residents of Auburn. It's gonna be a win for the residents of Coppergate. And we're super excited. It's, it's crazy how this thing has grown and what it's become, but it really has a chance to be just a signature project, both for Auburn and for us. And we're hopeful that we're gonna give it every effort to make it happen and make it a success. Super excited to work with you guys.
Excellent.
Question?
Questions or comments from council on that?
Or is that not appropriate?
No, 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 you can, that, that's fine. Thank you for going over three minutes because it was important that, that council heard everything that has taken place. And I just want to say thank you to your team and also to our entire team directors and, and your teams, because at times, this was very much an accelerated process. And everyone did a stellar job of ensuring that all the pieces fell into place for the deadlines that are imminent and to get to the point of bringing it forward to council tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Give your name and address for the record.
My name is Nick Pires, three oh two four zero, One Hundred and Tenth Place up on Lee Hill. I'm also a business manager in town. I just wanna say, it looks like the staff has done a great job. It's nice to see the public and private partnership working together. And as a resident and a business owner, I look forward to seeing it move forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will close the public comment, or public hearing, excuse me, and we will move to resolutions. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number five four four two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended and restated development agreement with Capital Acquisitions LLC related to the Auburn Gateway Project.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales.
I move for the approval of Resolution five four four two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales.
I don't think I could say anything more positive about it than what's already been said, and thank you for answering all my questions.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution number five four four two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Congratulations to everyone. We look forward to a wonderful asset for this community, and we look forward to continued work with you. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. City Attorney, I believe we have need for an executive session.
Yes, Mayor. My understanding is that there's been an executive session requested under RCW forty-two point thirty, point one ten, subsection one F, to receive or evaluate a complaint or charge against a public official. An estimate about fifteen minutes, so with a break, returning back out to open session at five twenty.
Excellent. Thank you. We will adjourn to executive session.
I think it's been great.
Are you doing Ingrid?
Good, are you?
Good. Can you sit in the entire?
No, I'm not, hopefully.
That's the five thirty.
Yeah. I usually come in a little bit early to, like, prepare my presentation and practice.
I bet you haven't. Everyone always just smiles at you when you come by. Yes, so we will hopefully get it.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Remember when the former president, uh, his first chief of staff lost his name? They were accident. Said, "They're rendering you." Hey, um, Speaker Habsin, where is he? Second, oh.
Who does?
Yeah.
Yes, he's in Canada right now getting his son married.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say.
Yep, he would've. Stan Josh was here.
Stan Josh was here.
Maybe we're still on Nancy's, remember to have trains.
Yeah, she knows Nancy.
Pretty good.
Come on, go back, back.
What's up?
Ready, go, maybe, Stan?
Well, so far, so good, Monday. Not much going on.
Yeah, we've been in sunshine.
Yeah. All good. Life in sunshine.
You think you're done? That was what you said.
Yes. That was. She had the conversation all the time.
I wonder what happened. She always has conversations.
So, I always say.
What did he say?
Did she go for the, oh, she got.
Do you want to say it? And then I'll say, what did he say? He tried to pretend.
She knows.
Does he?
Yeah. People ask her, how long does she just go?
What I like is the, the thing that does pretty simple.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, yeah, they're, yeah. Yeah, they're called there because of this. Yeah. Oh, see, that's just it. That's why it makes it so easy.
That's our judgey.
Yeah. This is your original Jackson.
Five more minutes.
You want to get yours launched? Yeah, it's right there. We just launch it now and.
Yeah.
Right there. You're just going to launch it and minimize it.
You need to, okay?
There you go. It's all yours.
Okay. Perfect.
And, uh, let's just see here. Same place that we can sit here. So, you're going to be standing up while you're talking?
I was thinking about sitting down over there.
Well, I can control this if you want.
If you don't, if you don't mind, then I'll do the same.
Well, I don't have a present, I don't have.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I'm just going to work from the back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, just give me the.
What? It looks like hell. It looks like, it looks like dying inferno.
That's right.
It's a scorched earth. It's awful. And the field's smoking everywhere.
Yep. All right. We have returned from executive session, and we will adjourn the special city council meeting. We will be reconvening for the study session at 5:30 or as soon after that as everything is set up for the new meeting. Yes, we are staying here.